It is time and then some. We will call our meeting to order. Appreciate everybody being here and how great the new year is when we got such sweet fellowship amongst us. So that's, that's very nice. Item number one on our agenda is the review and discussion of the draft future land use map and the draft economic element of the draft comprehensive plan. So Jeff, you or Katie, one want to talk to us about the map first?
I'll be glad to. And we've got a little PowerPoint here and I wonder if I could do the clicker.
We had it last night, right here.
Oh, perfect. Yeah.
Okay. And I just know, you know, y'all had brought up some really good points at the last meeting. And so we put, Katie and I put together a kind of a condensed presentation that's not focused on the elements as a whole, but just the issues that were raised at the last meeting, just to kind of focus on those. And then if, you know, there's anything else that you want to discuss related to them, or if they're, you know, there any concerns or questions, you know, we'll try to get those addressed for you. But just really briefly, you know, the comprehensive plan consists of 10 elements. You've reviewed and approved eight of them. You reviewed and basically conditionally approved two, the two remaining elements, and that's the economic element and the land use element. And you'll notice on the agenda for the 6:00 PM meeting, we'd ask you to consider a motion to accept those two elements, provided that you're satisfied with the information presented here at the 5 o'clock meeting. So the first element I want to mention to you, a couple of items is the economic element. And, you know, y'all identified some issues with some, some data that was presented in that element, and specifically it related to the economic base. And so we've got some correct numbers from you. The, the source for these numbers is Donna Lomenick. So we went to the county auditor on this, and of course, we talked with Rick as well. And so the total assessed property value in Newberry County, this is a corrected number, is 184.5 million, of which, and we were trying to be consistent with the year. So we stuck with 2022, you know, it's the year that we're using related to the data, of which 22.8 million relates to industry and manufacturing. The, what we really need to point out, because you know, y'all identified that, God, the 12.4 million dollar number seems awfully low for taxes. That is just taxes for the 10 largest property taxpayers in the county. So just those. So they have a combined assessed value of 35.7 million, or they did in 2022, and that produced taxes levy, taxes that we build, that were 12.4 million.
Just almost 10.
Just almost 10. And just as a refresher, the 10 are Kraft, Dominion, Newberry Electric, Kisswire, Duke Energy, GP, West Fraser, Samsung, AT&amp;T, and Pioneer. And it just kind of breaks down for you their taxable assessed value, and then the tax levied. And if you added those numbers up, you'd, you'd arrive at the 35.7 and the 12.4. And I think, I'm pretty sure unless we missed something, I think that addressed the, the items that y'all identified as, you know, needing to be, needing to be looked at, yeah. Which was a good observation. So otherwise, the element is, is like it was presented last time to y'all, and you've got a copy of.
Let's stop right there. Are there any questions from anybody related to that before we go? If I don't ask a question while I got it, it'll be gone before.
I should have took a breath. It helped you on that.
All right, go ahead.
Well, well, the next one is the land use element. And, you know, I got the impression, you know, and y'all can correct me if we're wrong, but Katie and I got the impression you were pretty satisfied with the element. You just had some concerns related to the future land use map. And specifically, you'd received some input from the public. And, you know, one thing about the council here in Newberry County is that it listens to people and it's responsive to people. And y'all listened and asked that we kind of reevaluate a few areas on the map, and then take, take a stab at it, you know, based on the discussion that occurred, which we did. And, you know, of course, we sent you copies in advance, but thought it would be helpful for you to see it on the big screen. But this is the existing or the current land use map. And you can see that we're, you know, predominantly parks, recreation, agricultural, and Sumter National Forest. This is the future land use map now on the screen that we initially proposed. So this was the one that came to you at the September 6th meeting, which, you know, in comparison to the, the map that's in the current comprehensive plan, the, the 2012 plan, was pretty conservative in terms of projecting future development. And y'all identified some areas there that, that you, you know, thought we should, should reconsider. And so those areas were addressed in this map. And it shows that, you know, the interstate corridor, you know, y'all commented that we really needed to, to look at it. And that was primarily the change that was made. You know, there was a focus on corridors, but not so much the interstate corridor. And so we, we got that addressed. You subsequently got some feedback from the public, and specifically the feedback related to areas along 76 and Bush River Road. And, you know, in, in those areas, we do have some, some water, primarily water, a little bit of sewer infrastructure. And so those areas were identified as transitional, but the feedback that y'all got from county residents were that they wanted to see the, the farmland in that area the county preserved. And so this map was our, us taking a stab at trying to accomplish that. And so you'll notice, I'm going to back up. This was the map going into the December 6th meeting that was amended and then presented to y'all on December 6th. And you'll notice kind of that light pink area to the northwest of the city of Newberry. And then you'll see in the amended map that that area is now light green, which of course, the dark green would be federal, federal land within the boundaries of the national forest area. And then kind of backing up, I'm kind of toggling between the two maps. You'll notice that, I'll call them enclaves, or I miss like donut holes within the national forest, kind of up around the Jalapa interchange on the interstate. You'll notice that they were identified as transitional. And I guess trying to be consistent with the changes that we made along Bush River Road and 76, we made those rural development as well, just those sort of those donut holes. And hopefully, this is more in line with what, you know, y'all were looking for based on the feedback. And, you know, some excellent points were made previously too, that, you know, this is not set in stone. I mean, this is based on current conditions and circumstances and our ability to project into the future, but circumstances change and council can always respond to those changes. And, you know, if an opportunity were to present itself, and it was acceptable to y'all, and it was acceptable to area residents, and you wanted to rezone a piece of property in the area that's kind of been dialed back to rural development, well, you certainly could address the future land use map as part of the zoning process. In fact, you could accomplish it in the same ordinance. You could change the future land use map designation using that ordinance, and you could change the map designation for zoning purposes in the same document, in the same legislative action. Does that map, I know that's a little bit drinking out of a, of a fire hose, but I mean, does that, is that in line with what y'all were looking for?
That looks, that looks good to me. I mean, because you can increase it if you need to.
Yeah, you can, you can always, always increase it. Yeah.
I, I think for me, it was, I was one of the ones that, that mentioned that. And I, I do think that preserving our farmland has just been crucial to the integrity and the backbone of Newberry County. And then I'd also understood from some folk, from at least two or three people, that part of that land on 76 had been put into a reserve.
Conservation easement.
Conservation easement. And so even if we wanted to do that, I mean, that, there was no reason to have that in there because that, that could not be there. So I think it, I think it recognizes what's going on in our county and gives credence to our heritage, protects our farmland, but says the council has a vision for growth in the future as well. And I, I think those two have to coexist. So I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased and I commend you and Katie and everybody else who had a part in it and the outstanding work to bring this back around.
Yeah, I think y'all have struck a good balance with that. Okay. Well, just, just a quick word about, well, what's next in the process. What we'd ask y'all tonight at the 6 o'clock meeting to consider is a motion to accept the two elements, the economic and the land use element, and then to adopt the plan. State law requires the use of an ordinance for that after a public hearing's been held with a 30 day notice in the newspaper. So it's a little longer notice period than a typical map or text amendment to the zoning ordinance. And so we propose to you, just to be able to meet, given the circulation schedule with the observer and our meeting schedule, we recommend first reading of the comprehensive plan ordinance on February 7th, second reading of public hearing on the 21st, and then third and final reading on March 6th, and then we'll have an adopted plan for the next 10 years.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
I'd like a plan to us. I hear no objection from any one.
Perfect.
Without question, then we have executive session is item number two on our agenda. We have listed a personnel matter, legal matters, and economic development matters. All those are set forth in the, in the agenda, and they're related to the appointment of pursuant, excuse me, the compensation of Newberry County appointed officials pursuant to the section 30-40-70. We have legal matters, discussion of a matter related to Newberry County's local flood plane management program and participation in the national flood insurance program, and then economic development matters related to Park, Project Artemis, Project Cardinal, and Project Phoenix. Is there a motion that we've moved to executive session? A motion by Mr. Shealy, is there a, a motion second by Mr. Sees is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimously. We stand in, moving into executive session. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimously. We stand uh in, moving into executive session.
We apologize for running late. Our executive session went over just a few minutes too long. Is there a motion? We come out of executive session, motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Fulmer is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, Mr. Fulmer? Yes, affirmative, okay, just making sure. All right, we, we come out of executive session, Newberry County Council met in executive sessions for the reasons stated, both on the agenda and in my comments as we moved in executive session, no action was taken. Is there a motion? We adjourn the five o'clock meeting. Motion by Mr. Shealy to adjourn the five o'clock meeting, second by Mr. Hip is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned from the five o'clock meeting. Now we have a motion to call, I'm sorry, now we're going to call the, the six o'clock meeting to order a regularly scheduled meeting. We're going to ask the Honorable Travis Reader if he would give our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. To Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. And as we venture into the year 2024, may we continue to do things for Newberry County that the citizens want and the citizens need. And as we continue to bless this county, continue blessing us as we try to do the job that you would want and need us to do. These blessings we ask in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
We are the leaders of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, it's wonderful to see you. We've had to change our format around about the election of officers a little bit with the way we do the five o'clock meeting. But it is with great honor that item number one on our agenda is the election for chair for 2024. I would open the floor for nominations for chair. Yes, sir.
I'll nominate Les Hip for chair.
Nomination for Mr. Hip, is there a second? Second by Mr. Shealy. Another nomination.
Todd Johnson, please.
Nomination for Todd Johnson, is there a second? Motion, second by Mr. Reader. Are there other nominations?
Make a move now and come to a close.
Motion nomination come to a close, second by Mr. Shealy. We've called the vote in order of nomination, all those for Mr. Hip, please raise your hand. All those for Todd Johnson, please raise your hand. Motion carries four, three, for me to continue as chair. We thank you so very much and are grateful for that. Item number two on our agenda is the election of vice chair. Is there a motion related to the election of vice chair? Mr. Hip?
I'd like to make a motion for Nick Shealy for vice chair.
Motion for Mr. Shealy for vice chair, is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Sees, is there other motion, other nominees? Yes, sir.
Mr. Reader.
Motion for Mr. Reader for vice chair, is there a second to that nomination? I second for purposes of the vote. Is there other, any other nominations?
Make a move, come to a close.
Nomination come to a close, is there a second? Motion by Mr. Shealy, all, okay. We call the question in order of nominations, all for Mr. Shealy, by show of hands. You're going to vote for yourself, all those for Mr. Reader. Motion carries four, three. Congratulations, Mr. Nick Shealy, who is our vice chair. I take all three items at once.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda with items A, B, and C, is there a second? Second by Mr. Shealy, is there any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Are there any additions, deletions, related to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion? We adopt the agenda. Motion by Mr. Shealy, our vice chair, is second by Mr. Hip, is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the agenda as published by, by show of hands, motion carries unanimously. Item number three, ordinance number 1102-2023, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalorium taxes and incentive agreement by and between Newberry County, South Carolina, and Project Cavalier to provide for a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. Item subsection A is public hearing. This is our public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Anybody who would like to speak on this matter can feel free to come forward at this time. Hearing none, is it, unless there's an objection from council, would declare the public hearing closed? Without objection, public hearing is now closed. Mr. Shealy makes motion, it should be third reading. Is there a second? Reverend Scurry makes the second, is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise. Third reading carries unanimously. Ordinance number 1201-2023, which is an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number 122401, revised and amended by zoning ordinance number 6-11-16 and codified in chapter 153 of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishes zoning classifications in districts, so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling one and twelve hundred acres designated as TMS number 399-56 from rural, R2 rural to GC general commercial. This is the public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter can feel free to come forward and speak at this time. Hearing none, unless there's objection by council, I will declare the public hearing closed. Without objection, the public hearing is closed. There's, is there a motion related to second reading? Mr. Shealy makes second reading, Mr. Hip is the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number seven is an ordinance number 12-02-20323, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalorium taxes and incentive agreement by and between Newberry County, South Carolina, and Project Palmetto to provide for the payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. This is the public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Anyone who would like to come forward and discuss the, have any discussion on this matter, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, unless there's an objection by council, I would declare the public hearing closed. Without objection, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion related to second reading? Mr. Sees makes the motion, Mr. Shealy makes the second, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number eight is the consideration of a motion to accept the proposed economic and land use elements of the draft comprehensive plan. There, we've heard that in our executive session, does anyone need further information about that? Hearing none, is there a motion that we accept those? Mr. Shealy makes that motion, Mr. Hip, your answers were satisfied as well?
Yes.
And he, he seconds that, so is there a discussion?
Just the, just for clarification purposes, since some people that may have been following this issue may not have had the opportunity to view the five o'clock plan. But for the land use element, the original land use map had been revised at our five o'clock meeting such that we reduced some of the agricultural property that had been previously put into industrial development, future use. So we did reduce some of that with the understanding that we don't have to change our plan at this time. If there is a, a need to change the land use element in the future to match industrial growth, then that issue can be, both of those issues can be dealt with at that same time. So that's a short reason for the reduction in the industrial growth corridors that we made on the land use. As far as the economic development plan, the numbers were reviewed and corrected to be in accordance with what the auditor had identified.